Welcome everyone to tonight's council meeting. I know the weather wasn't the greatest, but appreciate everybody making it here tonight. And I'd like to thank Wayne Thompson, he came early and decorated the chambers for all of council. He wanted to get us all the Valentine's mood, so that's really nice. So what we'd like to do is start off our meeting with the playing of Old Canada. So we'll direct your attention to the video screens. Thank you. So for the first order of the, or item for our agenda, is the adoption of events from our January 9th. Boo by Council Peter Angelo, second by Council Strange. Call the vote, all those in favor, and the events are approved. Now, item four disclosures of a peculiar interest. Do you have any disclosures of anyone from council? Uh, councilor LaCoco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Check number 423041, January 3rd, 2019, for $2,500 payable to me. Check number 423503, January 16th, 2019, $98.39 payable to me. And check 423757, January 23rd, $176.05 to project share, I sit on the board as a resident.
Okay, thank you for that. Mr. Clerk, you've got that. Okay, oh, Council Campbell?
Thank you, your worship. Check number 423424 may payable to myself.
Okay, thank you for that. Council Peter Angelo?
Thanks, your worship. There's a reimbursement check for myself as well. It's 423752.
Okay, thank you for that. Do we have any other ones? And, uh, I'm just having a peek here too. And I've got one as well. Sorry, these are so tiny. Okay, here we go. And for me, Mr. Clerk, it is check number 423672. Check made payable to myself as well. So we have no other checks or disclosures, then we'll move along to the, uh, everyone's favorite part of the meeting. The mayor's reports and announcements is very brief tonight.
First thing?
Yeah, oh yeah, it's right at the beginning.
How did it get moved up?
I don't know, it just worked out good. It used to be at the end, and then people were complaining they missed it. And so they asked, they requested, we had a lot of letters written in by my mother, my aunt, uh, my sister, everybody wrote letters. So, anyway, uh, this will be brief tonight. Uh, obituaries. Um, our condolences go out to Nicoletta DeCosmo, mother of Joe DeCosmo of our transportation department. And as well, sad the loss of Tony Panessa, one of our bus drivers for Niagara Falls Transit. Like to thank Council Strange for representing the city, giving greetings at the Niagara Korean Association's New Year's Eve party. And the last thing, uh, I'd like to, second last thing is to wish everyone a happy Valentine's Day. And again, to thank Council Thompson for what you did in chambers today, we appreciate that. And, uh, lastly is our next council meeting will be Tuesday, February the 26th. We'll be dealing with more budgetary items, including our capital budget. So that's it for the announcements, Councilor. You know, it was brief, it was. Case?
Best one.
It was one, it was the best I know, it was brief. Uh, moving on to appointments and presentation, 6.1, Citizens for Responsible Development. We've got Diane Monroe, who's requested to speak to council on their behalf.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak to council tonight. I am here as a representative of a new advocacy and communication group. Citizens for Responsible Development Niagara Falls. Approximately 20 people in our community got together to establish a volunteer community organization for the purpose of identifying and promoting responsible development within the city of Niagara Falls and surrounding areas which are included in the city of Niagara Falls. Identifying areas of concern and actively promoting development that will enhance our community. Protecting the natural environment, including protected water, wetlands, and endangered or threatened species. Ensuring development is supported by social, cultural, and heritage needs of the community, and that these venues are protected. We're ensuring, we would like to ensure development is supported by the accompanying infrastructure updates. Protect, building proactive relationship with developers with a view to achieving balance. And developing Niagara Falls as an inclusive and desirable community that may be enjoyed by all citizens while promoting good governance and transparency in all aspects of the development process. We are in the process of incorporating, and this should be accomplished in the next couple of weeks. We are not an adversarial group, but rather see ourselves as assistance to communication so that dialogue can be both ways, from and to council, and from and to the residents. So often in the last few years, residents are not informed or feel that they have not been informed when a development is, is considered that will impact on their way of life or denigrate the community feeling that they enjoy. This citizens advocacy group, Citizens for Responsible Development, hopes that we will be seen as a vehicle to establish healthy dialogue and to promote responsible development. Many people see this council as being one-sided, pandering only to developers or the tourism industry. While intensification is provincially mandated for our community, many see that the intensification is being done without regard to the community. In a similar matter, residents see that tourism and the tourist industry appear to be the priority. We are lucky here in Niagara Falls that we have a rich tourism industry. It is the gravy, but council at times appears to forget that the residents are the bread and butter. We see our role primarily as one of communication facilitators. Informing the public and raising concerns when they are there, and also praising when it is done right. Such as at the last council meeting when a building was repurposed for seniors housing and a brownfield development was approved that was of appropriate size for the surrounding community. We will praise you when you do it right. Citizens for Responsible Development Niagara Falls will address areas of public concern. Living or doing business within a city implies a sense of responsibility to maintain the community and to work with government authorities to ensure preservation of the community for the benefit, enjoyment of this and future generations. This committee seeks to preserve the beauty of the area and to protect environmentally sensitive areas while promoting and encouraging responsible development that will not endanger or forever change the natural beauty of the area. It is the goal of this organization to enhance the community so that all may feel a part of this great community. We acknowledge that paramount among the physical characteristics of the Niagara Falls area, then there are many features that make it unique. The falls, as one of the wonders of the world, is a natural draw for tourists all over the world. The area surrounding the falls is rich in history and offers a unique opportunity to explore the historically significant places that contributed to the creation of Canada. We are blessed with provincially significant wetlands. We need to protect and maintain these species-rich environments for this and future generations. Connecting two of the Great Lakes, the Niagara River provides a major source of water for most of the province of Ontario and must be protected from pollution or degradation. Waterfront paths and nature trails provide access to the beauty for all ages and for all income levels. Niagara Falls, while relying heavily on tourism as a source of capital, must recognize the citizens who live here and who contribute to the uniqueness of this community are important. Niagara Falls is a conglomeration of small communities such as, but not limited to, River Road, Chippewa, and Stamford. All of, who have unique cultural characteristics which must be maintained and respected. We accept this as our responsibility as citizens of this community to nurture and protect these unique characteristics and to assume the role as stewards of this area. We are therefore requesting the council accept this committee as partners in stewardship and communication and will listen to the citizens as this council moves forward with developments. We do have some concerns, but we are here this evening to our extend, our, to extend our hands to assist this council in the development process. As you are well aware, research into healthy communities and transparency in government is greatly enhanced when citizens committees work in close proximity with council. We are here as concerned citizens to request that this council recognize Citizens for Responsible Development Niagara Falls as a citizens committee with whom they will work in close proximity to ensure Niagara Falls is a healthy and welcoming community for all. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Counselors, if we have questions, I've got Council Carrio.
I don't know how to say this nicely, but you are criticizing us and accusing us of not having the best interests of most of the citizens at hand. And you are asking us to, I don't know what you're asking, but you're starting out by saying, we don't like what you're doing. You only look after certain segments and groups in our community. That was part of your speech.
That was part of my speech, I said it appears that way, and many citizens feel that way. I think by having a citizens communication and advocacy group.
Councilor Carrio's got the floor.
I'm sorry, should I not have spoken then?
No, no, you're fine, you're right to answer.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Um, so what I'm saying is that there are many citizens who feel that you have not looked after, that, I mean, Thundering Waters, the controversy around that is a prime example. I think that having a citizens advocacy group where we can reach out to citizens, where we can explain things, where we can get feedback and bring it back to council, will sort of, uh, level the playing field a little bit and, and make things go smoother. We want good development in this community. We want healthy development. We want development that protects the natural beauty of Niagara Falls.
Well, just, just to answer that, if it's my turn.
Yeah, you still have the floor.
Thousands of taxpayers in Niagara Falls voted for this group of counselors to represent them.
That's true. And thousands did not vote.
Well, that's their prerogative. But the thousands that did vote to put this group in charge of their community have put their trust in us, and they wouldn't have voted for us if they didn't trust us. It's unfortunate that you and your group don't feel the same way. But the thousands of people that elected this council and put us here have entrusted us to do what you're asking to do.
Okay, and we're asking to help you do it.
Do we have other counselors who'd like to, Council Campbell?
Uh, thank you, your worship. Uh, is this a closed group?
No, we are opening this group as soon as we achieve our incorporation. We will be opening this group to all citizens in Niagara Falls. We are hoping to gather email addresses and to have input from anybody who has a concern so that we can, as a group, help people move forward with their concerns, so their concern, their concerns are heard, and that we can, in some cases, help ameliorate some of those concerns that they may have.
Your worship, this probably isn't any different than, um, the committees that we appoint citizens to. Here's a group of citizens coming to us and saying, we'd like to take care or provide information from this perspective. Uh, Councilor LaCoco indicated she was looking for public input with respect to the budget, which we passed. We accepted that as a, a natural thing happening. I can't see anything wrong with this. I would make the motion that, uh, we, we accept the, their proposal to a council, and let's see how it works out.
Uh, okay, so you're making a motion that we accept, so the proposal, what exactly is the, what is the part you're?
That this council recognized the Citizens for Responsible Development Niagara Falls as a citizens committee with whom they will work in close proximity to ensure Niagara Falls is a healthy and welcoming community for all.
Okay, so that's your motion, and Council LaCoco, are you seconding that?
I would second it, but I have some questions about the logistics about how that would happen.
Yep, yep, well, would you like, you can go ahead, you can have the floor.
Mr. Mayor, through the speaker, how, how do you see the communication working? What departments would be involved? How do you see that communication going?
Well, I think one, one of the things that we have found is that sometimes it's difficult to navigate the website. And when there are developments that are being, or public meetings that are coming up, it says things like, you know, uh, public meeting of plan number, you know, A B C dash Q W Z 34. Nobody knows what that is. But if we can work closely, and I, and I have a good relationship with Alex Hrlavich, so, and many of the rest of us have a good relationship with the rest of the planning department. We will go to him and say, where is this development? And hopefully he will come to us and say, these are the developments that are being planned, so that we can notify the citizens around. I mean, the councils only, or the, the planning department's only obligated to notify people within 250 feet or something like that. We hope that we'll be able to notify people that would be, be concerned and let them know where these developments are. Many of the developments that are proposed are, are great, you know, and we're very gung ho about them. And wouldn't that be great that this council could have somebody, you know, write a little article on Facebook and Instagram and in the newspapers saying, way to go, council, you've done a great job of, of doing this. And that's what we're really hoping is that we'll be, you know, communication facilitators.
Just on that point, excuse me, uh, Councilor, Mr. Hrlavich wanted to comment.
I would just say that with respect to navigating the city's website to find public notices, any resident would type in www.niagarafalls.ca on the homepage. There is a link that says public notices. All our public notices are placed there by our communications department. So you don't have to search anywhere, it's right there as soon as you open the screen.
Okay, thank you for that, thank you. Counselor? Yeah, you have the floor.
Through the mayor to the speaker, would it be you contacting the city that the onus is on you? Or do you want us to contact you when development is being?
Um, I, I think the onus is on us as a citizens committee. I think that is our responsibility, and we're taking that responsibility. Um, we also hope that we will develop a, a good enough response, uh, relationship that, you know, if there's something coming up that we need to be aware of that's gone under our radar screen, that Alex would say the next time we're having coffee, hey, Di, you know, this is coming up, you better look at this.
Mr. Mayor, I would second the motion.
Okay, uh, do we have other counselors? Council Carrio?
Your worship. I certainly am not gonna, I'm not gonna support the motion. I don't believe that this is a non-adversarial group at all. When you come to the council and the first thing you do is insult the council, I don't think that's a, a good way to say, you're an, not an adversarial group. I think you are an adversarial group, and I don't think that we need you looking over our shoulders. Glad to have your help, we're all accessible, we all have phones published, we all have emails, we're all accessible. And the taxpayers of the citizens of Niagara Falls have put us in the position that you'd like to be in, so I'm not gonna support the motion.
Okay, uh, Council Thompson?
Well, um, if you look at every project that comes to the city, there's always the people right around that that are affected, that form their own committee and contact us and come in and make their submission. Um, during your comments, I was amazed with your negative comments with respect to tourism. I have been around a long time, and I was mayor when all of our industry started to pull out of the area because the provincial government changed the cost of power, and, because we had the cheapest power in Ontario, because we're beside the faults. And we used to go out at election time, uh, the cyanide, the welling chemical, the lionite, all of these place, there'd be two, 3,000 people running out, uh, at the end of the shift. And we had industrial development, and we did not have tourism. We used to have the magic hundred days where they came in April, uh, May 24th, and left on Labor Day. And I tell you, we've worked so hard in the past 25 years to change that around. Um, I was involved with the Chamber of Commerce just recently. I was involved with the Chamber of Commerce just recently regarding the best thing that's happened to this municipality for economic development in the last thirty years, and they said, "The casinos," and asked me to speak on that. And I have worked hard on that, not because of tourism, it's because we're providing jobs. You know how many jobs there are? Probably twenty-five thousand jobs from around the entire region that come here every day to support what we got because of the falls, the Parks Commission, and where would we be otherwise? Do you know what the assessment for an industry is in this city?
No, I don't.
Why would you research that? It's two point nine percent, which is, means we are not in the industrial business. And all we've attempted to do is take advantage of what we have out here to bring people, to create jobs, to make this as a wonderful community, which it is, and we've been very successful at it. And to come up here and make negative comments, what would we do tomorrow without tourism?
I'm sorry, sir, I think you have misunderstood what I have said.
I don't wanna listen to you.
I'm sorry, okay. My apologies.
I don't care. We are so lucky to have what we have here and to suggest that a committee is gonna come... I listen to people every day, sometimes twenty phone calls in a day about their issues and their problems and their concerns, and I'm sure everybody else around the table does the same thing. So, I don't know what we're attempting to do here. Every project out there has a group who is trying to get their word to this council, which I understand, and that's our responsibility. So, I, I think that the thinking here with respect to tourism is really unbelievable. I can't believe it.
Thank you. Did you wanna respond?
I just wanted to read the sentence that I said about tourism. It says, "We are lucky here in Niagara Falls that we have a rich tourism industry." That is what I said.
Yeah, that's not what she started off by saying. It was negative.
Okay, thank you. I've got Counselor Dubrowski.
Through you, the mayor, Ms. Monroe, thank you for your, for your presentation. I think we have to keep in mind, we're, we're lucky to live in a community that, that has an avatar system. We have eight counselors and a mayor around the table that, that our residents and our citizens can, as mayor, or as Counselor Thompson mentioned, can pick up the phone, Facebook message, email. I've only been on council for a number of months, but I've already had an opportunity to meet with a number of residents. So, have you had a chance to meet with many members of council in the, over the past two or three years?
Absolutely, I've met with several members of council over the last few years.
Okay. I, I think that the ongoing dialogue...
May I just may some, say something? I don't think that it is an issue that we cannot approach council. This is an approachable council, and I think everybody would agree with that. I mean, we have phone numbers and cellphone numbers that we can reach you at any time. I think what we're, we're looking at is that as development moves forward, there are some concerns. And if you are aware of the new LPAT that's coming in, in order to be able to question or have standing at the LPAT, you have to be an incorporated body. How many citizens are going to incorporate themselves so that they can present their point of view? This is a vehicle that we may be able to help the regular citizens to be able to put their point of view through when LPAT comes. Now, we're not going to rubber stamp every single thing. We're not silly people. We're quite bright, articulate, well-educated people who really have this community at their best interests. And all we're asking to do is let us help you communicate to the people the good, the bad, and the ugly, but mainly the good. We are not saying that there's a lot of things negative here. We are saying we wanna work forward in a progressive, appropriate manner.
I think I'll echo what Counselor Carrio had mentioned. There was a vote in October. Obviously, the people who voted this council in supports this council, they trust this council and the decisions that they'll make. I think with Facebook and Instagram, we, we live in a technological age where we're available twenty-four seven. You pick up the phone, you can contact us. I think we, we have your best interests at heart, and to that end, I, I don't support the motion.
And do you think that a lot of people would agree with that with Thundering Waters?
I don't think that, that's the discussion we're having right now. I think to the motion, I'm speaking to that, and I think we're speaking more about communications than, that's what we're talking about today. Thank you.
Okay, I've got Counselor Carrio.
Just a comment, not, not to, you're welcome to comment, comment on anything that comes before this council.
Thank you.
You are, you know, we, we welcome your comments. We welcome your input. It's just to have another body that, that the developers of the council or whatever has to go to, I don't think is something that we're looking to, to have. You're welcome now. You don't, we don't need to pass anything. The city notifies, puts notifications in the paper, notifies everyone of any issues that are coming before council, and you and your group are, are well-informed on things that come before council. And we welcome it. I just don't like, I didn't like the approach. I didn't like the tone of your first comments, accusing us of not really doing our job and only worrying about a certain segment. That's not my, that's not my role. I'm, I'm looking after as many of the people in Niagara as I can. We welcome you to come. We don't need to do anything more. You can come to any of our planning meetings, any of the other meetings. You're welcome to make your comments known as a group or individually. You already have that.
And when, and when large segments of the citizens feel that the only choice they have is to go through LPAT and they need to be incorporated, are you gonna help them with the financial costs of incorporation? Sorry, that was sarcastic. I shouldn't have said that.
No, exactly, Sarah, but that's okay.
It was sarcastic.
Is there any other members of council had questions or wanted to make comment? Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, your worship. I, I'm sorry that this got off on the negative foot with tourism. I think we all agree around the table that we represent all the citizens of Niagara Falls. As Counselor Carrio said, we welcome you to come to council anytime that you, you have an issue. I'm taking this as an opportunity just to officially recognize them as a group, and they have no power, they have no authority over any staff members. They're trying to help make our community a better place to work, live, and play.
Okay, so there's no further, I did have one question to Ms. Monroe, 'cause I saw in the letter you sent that you said a group of approximately fifteen, and in your presentation you referenced twenty, and that you were still open to membership. So, do you actually have a number on, on, you're gonna have a cutoff point?
No, 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 we're, we're, this is just the fifteen to twenty members is the steering committee. We see ourselves as a steering committee, and we are gonna be opening it up to, you know, everybody in Niagara Falls that would like to attend meetings. We'll have regular meetings, we'll have regular postings of all of our concerns and our, our praises, and we'll move forward from there.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, well, we've got a motion moved by Counselor Campbell and seconded by Counselor LaCoco, that this group be recognized for the purposes of communicating different events and things happening within the city, the good, the bad, and the ugly. So, we'll call the vote. All those in favor, okay? And opposed? Okay, so that motion fails.
Have a motion?
Yes, Counselor Carrio?
Thank them very much for their presentation. Welcome to come anytime and receive and file a presentation.
Okay, a motion by Counselor Carrio, seconded by Counselor Campbell, that it would be thanked, welcomed, and invited to come to anytime that they wanna come. We'll call that vote. All those in favor, okay? And that's unanimous. Thank you very much for being here. We now move along to our budget presentation, and I would invite our budget chair, Counselor Peter Angelo, to take my chair.
You can't look at four shoes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, tonight will be our first presentation of the two thousand and nineteen operating budget. Tiffany Clark has recently taken over as the acting director of finance, and I know she's gonna walk council through the presentation, so Tiffany, I'll pass it over to you.
Because no one wanted to stay. Okay. Okay, I will try to keep everyone awake longer than Todd does. I had to. So, here's what we're looking at for our draft operating budget. We've proposed revenues at a hundred and forty-one million, expenses a hundred and forty-two point seven, which is working out to a difference of one point six. The levy increase required after growth to balance that would be about two point four seven percent. And then for council's reference, I've included that, per the Bank of Canada, the total CPI at the end of two thousand and eighteen was two percent. So, how does that break down? So, the revenue's a hundred and forty-one thousand. This is showing you by object code, so taxation, you can see we've had very successful growth, one point eight two percent, that one point two million dollars. The other municipalities, two million dollars. This represents an increase in funding to be received from the region for the increase in intermunicipal transit service hours, which is gonna be discussed later. The casino revenue, I've increased the budget to better reflect the actuals. Our last, our year to date for two thousand and eighteen, our calendar year, not the OLG's year, came in at twenty-four point eight million. So, I've just increased the budget to twenty-three point five to better reflect actuals, but there's a corresponding increase of the same amount in the transfer to reserves, 'cause as council knows, we put that away and then allocate it through the capital budget. So, there's no levy impact, just making budget more closer to actuals. Grants, again, same thing. This is an increase in the Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund. It's gone up from, I believe it was two point one, sorry, two point two million last year to three point three million. Our operating budget actually still had the two thousand and seventeen figure. I'm not sure we must have received the notice late. So, again, increase on the revenue side, but same increase on the expense side, no levy effect for the taxpayer. I think that was all I was gonna highlight here on the expenditures. So, we've got our salaries going up about four percent. As you learned in camera, this represents the eleven new positions we're recommending. There is a couple slides later in the presentation that outlines what those are. Debt servicing, you can see on the debt servicing, yeah, there's this later, over here, about fifty thousand dollars is coming off the budget for debt servicing costs, so just a little bit this year. And then in the transfer columns, you can see those increases I was talking about over here that are...
Transfer to capital, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Transfer, can I ask a question?
Sure, absolutely.
Transfer to capital, we're transferring one point three million dollars from more this year to capital, on the transfer to capital line?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes. So, it's not necessarily more this year, so because of the increase in the Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund, that increase has been reflected there as well. We did increase the transfer to capital from four million dollars to four point five million, and this is to help offset, we'll get to in a later slide, we're moving this year a lot of our capital staff, project managers' salaries over to be funded from the capital budget to be allocated to the projects that they're working on.
And the transfer to reserves and reserve funds, three point six?
Yeah, so part of that, through you, Mr. Chair, to the council. Part of that is the two point five million that I increased the casino money for, and then... Just a second. Six point five. And there's a, oh, it's in a later slide. I've asked for an assessment appeal, special purpose reserve of two hundred thousand, and we've increased our fleet replacement transfer. We're hoping that we can increase it from a hundred and fifty thousand up to eight hundred and sixty-three thousand.
Thank you.
So, expenses are going up five point nine three percent. Revenue was four point seven. The next two slides just break this out by departmental category. Not gonna go through these in too much detail, 'cause my next slides highlight some of the highlights. So, that's the revenue, and then the expenses are, they're on your iPads as well, so. Fee-for-service groups, so we've got our, our fee-for-service groups listed here. The Boys and Girls Club is requesting a small increase of five thousand dollars or two point five percent. The last increase they had was two point eight percent in two thousand and fifteen. So, staff is comfortable recommending a small increase, but that is council's discretion. And same thing with the art gallery. They've requested a small increase of a thousand dollars or three point seven percent, and their allotments remained at that twenty-seven thousand dollars since two thousand and twelve. So, again, staff is comfortable with a small increase. For grants, as you guys are aware, we've got the municipal accommodation tax that's effective January first this year, and as a result, we have removed Niagara Falls tourism and winter festival lights from our operating budget. This frees up seven hundred and two thousand dollars, and those groups were encouraged to seek funding through the Niagara Falls Hotel Association, who's responsible for the municipal accommodation tax monies. The other grants, we've got Project Share, Women's Place, YWCA, and One Foundation is a hospital grant. Staff's recommending we maintain the levels, the two thousand and eighteen levels, which also haven't changed for a number of years. In terms of the Lions Grant, council's maintained a position of not entertaining new grants, and in the last few years, they've actually removed quite a few. Council's being asked later in the agenda in the fee waiver report to continue this position of not entertaining new grants. Staff is actually recommending that we remove the Lions Club grant of two thousand dollars as well, and that's in line with past practice of removing grants from our budget.
On that, yep, go ahead.
One foundation, is that part of a commitment, a so-called year commitment? Or is that just being put in the budget every year now?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm not aware if that's a commitment or not.
I can't remember whether we committed them for so many years, or...
I know we clearly paid it for my time.
I thought when they asked for fifty, I thought it was, I, I thought, I didn't know they were gonna come back.
Mr. Chair, if I may, we've included that amount every year for several years now. When One Foundation appeared here, I'm not sure how many years ago, this is a contribution towards equipment purchase for the hospital, which is part of the community contribution.
Right.
This is completely separate from any new, new hospital lands or build, but this is simply going to GNGH, and I, I believe we made it specific to GNGH, that this money would be used for new equipment purchases, and we've just kept that in the budget.
No, but I think, yeah, the question was, are we on a multi-year commitment? Or is this just something that we've been doing for...
I believe we've just kept it going year to year.
Yeah, I think so. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that's grants. For our boards, so this one, I, I put a lot of text there, I know it's a bit wordy, but I wanted to explain the airport. So, although it looks like the airport's asking for an increase of a hundred and thirty-one thousand to a hundred and sixty-two thousand, last year their ask came in late, in March, after our operating budget was already approved. So, council approved their operating increase through the May report with the OLG funding. So, in two thousand and eighteen, we paid the airport a hundred and fifty-six thousand for operating, their operating grant. However, only a hundred and thirty-one thousand was included in the operating budget. The remaining twenty-five thousand was paid through OLG monies. This year, we've received a request in time to include the ask in the budget.
Counselor Thompson?
Could somebody bring us up to date where the region plays...
Yeah, good question. Could sense us on that.
Yes, thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. We have actually a meeting later this week with the CAOs and the acting CAO at the region. The discussions were put on hold as we went through the election period last year and with some changes in the CAO at the region. We're getting that back on stream. We have an airport liaison committee. The airport liaison committee is made up of the three mayors and the three CAOs from the partner municipalities. We met about a month ago and came up with a strategy, and that's led to our meeting with the CAOs this, this week. We'll be back reporting to you probably in the next month, but our goal still is to look at other partners, including the region, and looking to push this asset up to the regional level.
I, I thought that was a discussion that has already been going on, that didn't go anywhere?
Through you, Mr. Chair. It has been ongoing. There's been... There's been several pieces that we've completed. If council may recall, we did, we had to do an environmental assessment in case we were looking at transferring the property, that was completed. We did an asset valuation of the airport itself, that was completed. And the third piece is that we went out and did a proposal call to see if there was any private sector interest that wanted to partner with us. We wanted to complete all three of those processes before we took the discussion in further to the regional level. We're at that stage now, and, you know, we're hopeful that in the next few months, we'll be able to have a lot more news to report to council. We're going to be reporting back. I would hope we'd be able to be back with some information to you, hopefully within the next month or two. Thank you.
Okay, and then the library. I had some phone calls from some of the councillors just asking for more specifics on what the library increase represented, so I thought I would just include a couple of the highlights below. So they're asking for a five point two percent increase, and this can be largely explained with labor increasing one hundred and seventy-one thousand, which is cost of living increases, and a request for three part-time staff. The library's expanded their hours back to seven-day service, adding Sundays back to the Community Centre and Victoria. They've also got Friday nights now at the Community Centre and additional hours to Chippewa. And then there's an increase in digital resources of twenty-two thousand, which represents more users moving to electronic resources like ebooks. And then security, they're having some security issues at their Victoria Library, and they now have full-time security, so that's gone up by thirty-two thousand dollars, almost thirty-three.
Counselor Cari?
Question pertaining to library. How in-depth do we, do you, or do some of your people get into it reviewing the request for the library? We got over their budget pretty seriously, and you're comfortable with the increase? Or do we just take what they have told you?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We look through, we meet with Alicia and Caitlin, her assistant, and go through a detailed Excel spreadsheet of their budget. They explain all the increases. I worked with Alicia to come up with what was driving her increases. I believe her board dictates, they make the decisions on the budget, and that's what's presented to us. So have I gone in and analyzed it heavily? No.
Okay, thanks.
So new positions, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, we talked about this quite a bit in camera, but we, staff did ask for twenty-one new positions, and we've narrowed that down to eleven recommended, four of which don't have an impact on the operating budget achieved through attrition, et cetera. So, sorry, those are just highlighted, but the checkmark ones are the ones we're recommending. And then, so these are some highlights about some of the different departmental areas. So administrative services, which would be CAO, human resources, legal, finance, the internal departments, just some highlights. The Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund amounts, they're still not released from the province. For the last three years, they've been reducing by fifteen percent. So currently, our budget includes an estimated reduction of one hundred and fifteen thousand or fifteen percent. Hopefully, it's not more. Casino revenue, I talked about this one, so I've increased it by two point five million to better reflect the actuals. And again, corresponding transfer to special purpose reserve fund is increased by the same, so no impact on the levy. Doctor recruitment, there's a report coming up later for this, and they're recommending an increase from eighty thousand dollars to three hundred thousand. The corresponding transfer from reserve fund is increased by the same amount, so there's no impact on the levy. Doctor recruitment's always been funded by our reserves. I wanted to highlight, there is a new initiative included in administrative services, and that's sixty thousand dollars for a customer service plan. And then the senior property tax rebate, we've been experiencing increased applications, so we've increased the budget to match demand. So now we can accept six hundred and eighty applications, as opposed to four hundred in the prior budget. Some more, oh, we've got a transfer to special purpose reserves added for two hundred thousand dollars. We're requesting that this be added this year to set up a reserve for assessment appeal allowances. So we do have write-offs budgeted into our taxation budget, but this would be, the idea would be if our actual write-off succeeded our budgeted write-offs, we would have a pot of money to pull from. Transfer to special purpose reserves been added for seventy thousand dollars to top up the election special purpose reserve. With the recent election being funded from our special purpose reserves, our election fund is down to about ten thousand dollars, so we'll need to work through the next three years at topping that up. So we felt it would be prudent to spread it out over the three years at seventy thousand a year to top that backup. The municipal accommodation tax, I talked about this, this is new. The city gets to keep five percent as an administration fee, so we've included an estimate of two hundred thousand dollars in revenue, which would equate to four million dollars being collected out of the municipal accommodation tax. And then the transfer to capital, so we'll talk about this a little bit more in the municipal work slides, but we've increased the transfer to capital from four million dollars to four point five million dollars, and this is to help offset the million dollars in salaries that are being transferred to the capital budget. Fire services, not a lot of changes this year. You learned in camera, the public education officer has been added. This has been achieved through attrition, and that was per council direction on a report earlier, I guess, in two thousand and eighteen. Municipal works, so beginning in two thousand and nineteen, we're transferring the salaries of those staff who work on capital projects to be, to the capital fund to be funded from capital and allocated to the projects each staff are working on. This helps better reflect the cost of the capital projects, no different than you would code an external account consultant to the capital project. Now we're going to put our internal consultants' time against it as well. So that results in eight hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars of salaries transferred from municipal works. And then the other large change in there is the city would like to transfer the full surplus in fleet generated from our internal rent, rental rates charged to each department. So we charge our departments for our fleet, their repairs, and amortization costs, the insurance, et cetera. So we create a surplus, and the idea is to put that away, you charge the amortization so that you sock it away, and you can, you have the money there to buy the machines when they're done. So that changed, the transfer is from special purpose reserves from one hundred and fifty thousand to eight hundred and sixty-three thousand. Cemeteries and parks, so the cemeteries includes a request of fifty thousand dollars for a new master plan, and then, again, the salary thing, there's two, there's some landscape salaries that will also be moved to capital, two hundred and twenty-one thousand, so together those represent the one point one million that I referred to earlier. Transportation, I thought I would include their hours, there's quite a bit of changes with intermunicipal transit here. They're actually requesting their service hours to almost, to more than double. They're going up one hundred and five percent. Wigo's going up seven, almost eight percent, and Niagara Falls Transit's going up one and a half percent in our service hours. Charavan also has experienced increased demand, so in order to accomplish or to service the increased demand, there's an additional cost of ninety-six thousand dollars, and I believe that's for an additional route being added to the Charavan. And then in order to accomplish the level of service for intermunicipal transit that the region is requesting, the city may need to use their own buses in some instances until our new buses have been delivered. So when the city uses their own buses, we charge the region an extra twenty dollars per hour as a capital component. The idea being, so where that's built into our revenue estimate from the region, that extra twenty dollars an hour is being transferred to a special purpose reserve for transit fleet replacement. So that's that one hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars that you'll see in the budget that's new. So that's just transferring the region's capital component of their hourly cost to our fleet replacement reserve. And then you guys remember this from last week, per council direction, the crossing guard hourly rates increased, so that, that results in an increase of fifty-six thousand.
Question?
Oh, Counselor Campbell, sorry.
Was a motion made that staff was going to look at minimum wage for the crossing guards, living wage, I'm sorry, and that was kind of being back to us in the fall? That's still going to happen?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, what we're going to do, and we'd indicated to council last week, is we'll get this new hourly rate of seventeen thirty-four in place, and HR's doing that now, and we're going to go and get a report together on the living wage issue. What we would do is we present that back in a manner that if council did implement another increase, we would implement that for the new school year, starting in September.
Thank you.
Sorry, Counselor Thompson?
Is that going to be a full report on that issue, a living wage? How many people are involved?
Well, to answer, to answer the question, I'm not sure how many people in our community are affected, but it would be a complete report. We would explain the concept to council, what the impact would be.
Because most people who are crossing guards are usually retired. It would be a supplement to their existing pensions. Most of the people I see are older people who would probably be on pension anyway.
Are you looking at a blank?
Actually, I did look at that when it came up. I said seventeen dollars, and that's not too bad. So anyway, all I'm looking for, all of the information with respect, because if you're talking about a living wage, this is a different sector altogether.
So I think the question was more around, is it going to be a report just on the transit hires, or is it going to be a report around all of our employees at City Hall?
Well, through you, Mr. Chair, I think in order to explain what the concept of the living wage is, we have to have a bit more fulsome report, because there are different components to it. But the, the main direction ending up from that would be to, do we need to address this problem any further? But I think council, in understanding that, it needs to understand what that whole living wage is about.
Okay. Mr. Jen, did you have something to say as well?
Yes, just, I'd like to thank council. That evening, when it went to council, four people applied the next day, and we're back up to speed in hiring the nine that are, that we were missing.
That we need, that's good news. Yes. Okay, thanks. Pass it back over to you.
So just included three slides that I've got from Carl's staff over at Transit to highlight the ridership changes, so it's hard to read from here, but I believe it's gone up to one point eight million, is it, in two thousand and eighteen for Niagara Falls Transit? And then we've got the IMT ridership up to six hundred and seventy thousand, and the Wigo system up to almost one point nine. So you can see the increases there. Recreation and culture, there's, there's not a lot of changes for two thousand and nineteen, however, just wanted to highlight that there will be future budget impacts in two thousand and twenty, with the new culture hub hopefully being built, and the potential implementation of a ten-year strategic plan, which is going to come forward in two weeks as an ask in the two thousand and nineteen capital budget submission. Planning and building, just wanted to highlight, there's, the Morrison Street building should be up and running soon. I think we're moving in this month or next month possibly. So budget's been asked, one hundred and thirty-one thousand for expenses, and seventy-two thousand's been put in for revenue, and that's for renting the second floor out. So it results in a deficit of fifty-eight thousand dollars. Debt, everyone loves a debt slide, so I kept it in. You can see that from two thousand and fifteen to eighteen, the city has reduced its debt balances from fifty-seven point seven million to forty-eight point one million, and that's a total reduction of nine point six million. And you can see in two thousand and nineteen, it's continued, it's projected to go down as well. In the same periods, the city obtained new debt, as council's aware, of only one point five million in two thousand and sixteen for the LED street lighting project, and one point one million in two thousand and seventeen for the library HVAC system. I know a question that's always asked is, what's the city's debt servicing charge? And we're at four point two percent of our own-source revenues at the end of two thousand and sixteen. So I'm hoping to have an update in a couple weeks for two thousand and seventeen for you.
Four point two, the province allows twenty-five percent?
They allow twenty-five, and I believe our council set a limit of not going over ten, so we, ten percent, so we have a lot of room in there. And we're going, we're looking to present further information on debt levels of the other municipalities during our capital presentation next meeting. I know that was asked at an earlier council, that we come back with that. So next steps, we're, we're not looking for approval tonight, we're looking for some direction and discussion on the operating budget, and if you can provide feedback, we can go back and kind of make some changes.
Any counsel have any comments at all on the presentation, or what you would like to see staff come back with? I know in the past, we've always had staff come back with some options for us that will allow us to reduce the overall tax impact that we pass on to the residents. Counselor Strange?
Yep, through you, Chair, to Tiffany. Just wonder, I don't know if you've ever had a detailed kind of report, or if you're going to on our, on our reserve funds?
Okay.
And what, what we can actually dip into? I know there's DC charges and stuff that are taken forth for projects and stuff like that, but other stuff, maybe a detailed report that maybe we can come back in the next couple weeks on our, our next, next meeting, or if you had a plan already to do, so I don't know.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I wasn't planning on bringing a report on reserves, but it's something we could look at, including with the capital budget meeting?
That'd be amazing.
Because we'll be talking about all the different funding levels, so we could certainly provide an update on our end of, end of two thousand and seventeen balances.
Yeah, probably just give council an idea of what we got in there, and what we can, I know we have a lot of projects that we want to finish up for this year.
Yes.
If we have to dip into that, then it's possible.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other counsel? Counselor LaCoco?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to thank Ms. Clark for the hours that she spent with me going through all of these pages and all of these numbers, it was very helpful, thank you. I know the region is increasing five point eight percent, and our residents don't want to see an increase in ours. It's going to be challenging to do that. We're already using some of our tax money for the, some of the OLG for subsidization of our taxes, so it's hard to, what's going to happen if our OLG money goes away? What's going to happen to our taxes? Me personally, and through the residents, there's a lot of people that would like to see a zero increase, knowing that we're going to take a five point eight percent at the region. So my inclination would be to refer it back to staff and come back with a balanced budget. That's my personal opinion, based on comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Cari?
I've really never had anyone else, other than yourself, that would like to see a zero percent increase. So I'd like to see a zero percent or less, because if the region does come in with a five point eight, and we've used the region, the regions come in lower than us before, which has averaged our rate pairs to the good in the past, but if they're going to come in anywhere near six percent, it would be nice to give our taxpayers a break. We hear that all the time, you know, we get twenty-five million dollars from the OLG. I know we're trying to spend most of it on infrastructure, but it would nice, be nice to see us come in with a zero percent increase, so work your magic.
Well, I think, I mean, I'm sure staff can prepare some options for council, and then council can look at the options. They want to go down that road. Counselor Strange?
Through you, Chair, again. I know I asked for a report on the, on the reserve, I was actually thinking about our debt as well, and if we can, would you have a chart that compares us to the other eleven municipalities, as far as what their debt would be against ours? And if we just, if we get that, that would be amazing for the next budget meeting, too.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. I am working on a slide that would show the debt percentage level of the other area municipalities, as well as the region for our capital budget meeting. I know that was a request before.
But it would be the ratios, right? It wouldn't be the, the full debt that the municipality has?
No, it would just be the ratio, yeah.
Yeah, it would just be the ratio.
Debt servicing over own-source revenues.
Yeah.
Well, just gives us a good idea of how we stand against the other municipalities.
Oh, for sure, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments by members of council? If not, then perhaps a motion just to accept the presentation and then pass it back to staff, so that staff can come back with some options on how we can reduce the two point four seven down to zero or even lower. I have a motion by Counselor LaCoco, seconded by Counselor Cari. All those in favor? Thank you very much. And then the next report is F two thousand and eighteen oh seven, and, yeah, do we want to just simply accept this as well? I know a lot of it has been spoken about already.
A lot of the finance.
Yeah.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair, yeah, that's just the report that basically summarized the report, so I think it's really just to receive the report and refer it back to staff.
Motion to receive and file made by Counselor Cari, seconded by Counselor Campbell. All those in favor? Opposed? And I think we're done for finance then. I'll pass it back to the mayor.
Let me get that. Okay, moving on to reports. Eight point one is our Region of Niagara Waste Collection Contract. So we've got more information, more information, and there's a recommendation that we give feedback to the region on how we feel about garbage and recycling. And there's a proposal, as you know, to go to every other week pickup of our garbage. There's suggestion to have clear bags in our, in our garbage as well as some other things. So we've got a report here. Do we have some feedback or some direction from council on what the region is suggesting to do? Yes, Mr. Clark?
Just before you get to that, Your Worship, I did include a late addition to the agenda today where we did get some correspondence just received today from the town of Fort Erie on the same subject matter. And so I just wanted to bring that to council's attention as to what it is that Fort Erie had passed today. So if you, if you go back and refresh your screens, it should, you should see it updated. So 8.1 is now correspondence from town of Fort Erie. The recommendation is just to receive that information, but it was thought that it would be good for council to know what Fort Erie did in case it comes to consideration for their motion this evening.
Yep, go, Council Peter Angelo.
I, I read the town of Fort Erie's motion. Are they asking just for the region to explain what the benefits are? Or are they asking to take garbage back on their own?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I believe the motion is suggesting that as one of the options for costing, that they come back by looking at taking the entire waste management collection in-house and not contracting it out anymore. I believe that's the intent of the motion. And Mr. Mayor, while I'm up, if I may, if council, if you could, if council could just refer to the first page of the report and really trying to do is through the report is just try to structure it so we could work you through a bunch of decision points that might make it easier. So if you look at the first part, it talks about residential properties. And there's really sort of five decision points within the report that you really need to think about. And we went through each section that way. So if you want to focus kind of...
Are you on 8.2?
I'm on, I'm sorry, I'm on the staff report.
8.2.
Yes.
So should we should deal with the, what we're going to do first with the Fort Erie report, right? Then we can move to 8.2?
Sure.
If you don't mind, just so we can move on. So did, so there's a report from Fort Erie that's basically asking the region, what are the benefits if they bring waste management in-house rather than contracting out to a third-party group? So you still have the floor, Council Peter Angelo?
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. I don't know if I really like that idea. Me personally, and I know that I've said this before at council, I would be willing to take the contract over as the city of Niagara Falls and allow the region to, I guess, disseminate the contract amongst the 12 municipalities and let them all do their own RFP. I would be more willing to do that than I would be to tell the region to do garbage in-house. So, I mean, personally, I don't think that I would support the resolution. But I'll have some comments about the other report when you get there.
Okay.
If you need a motion just to receive and file before the Erie one, that's fine.
Okay, so I want to hear first Counsel Thompson, his hand up, so we'll find out.
I don't think they're, I think they're just asking for a report regarding the financial aspect of it, how it would be. As far as taking it back here, we had it here.
Yep.
And it was a disaster. And we were the ones that got it at the region. So it'd be interesting just to have a report. That's our responsibility. Let's hear what they have to say, cost involved. I'm not in favor at this point, but I saw what happened the last time they called for tenders. And I remember the fellow from the region up there said, oh, this is wonderful. We got a tender $5 million cheaper. So you see what happened? It was disastrous at the end. They couldn't pay the people, they didn't come in, the equipment was falling apart. Thank God there's another, another opportunity to see what's going to happen. But I don't see anything wrong with getting a report saying, well, this is what the region would charge compared. Just be a good comparison.
So did you want to make a motion then, Counselor?
Yeah, if, support.
Support the resolution?
Yeah.
Okay, we got a motion by Counsel Thompson to support the resolution. Do I have a second here? Do you have a second, Counsel Carrio? Do we have any further discussion to this? Yes, Counsel Campbell?
I'm not quite sure what the resolution is.
Resolution is that we support Fort Erie getting a report regarding the cost of in-house garbage collection. And so we can use that as a comparison with the tenders when they come up. And we can have some ideas.
Yeah, that's essentially what they're at, that the report is.
I can, I can support that. One of the items they talk about is clear garbage bags.
Yeah, well, that'll be next. We're going to deal with that in the next report.
Okay.
Yeah, the next report. Okay, so we've got a motion by Counsel Thompson, seconded by Counsel Campbell, that we support the Fort Erie resolution asking the region to come up with a cost analysis of bringing the waste removal in-house. So we'll call the vote, all those in favor? Okay, and that's approved, thank you. So now we move to 8.2, Mr. CAO?
Yes, so, Mr. Mayor, if you look at your report, if you pull that up, try to walk you through the segments because the region is looking for feedback. Now, keep in mind that the region ultimately is going to have this issue put out to tender. And regional council is the one that's responsible for making the final decision in terms of the decisions that are made on the, on the tender bids. So if you look at low-density residential, which is between 1 and 6 units, and that is, there's five decision points that we really should get feedback on tonight. So the first one is every other week garbage collection. Increase from one bag to two bag per limit if you go to two every other week. So...
Excuse me, could I just stop you? Which one are we on? Which attachment are we working on?
It's the very first report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, that one's got the breakdown of low-density?
It's got 1 to 5.
Yeah, that's the one.
This is the first recommendation.
Very first. Very first page.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, oh, I see what you're saying, okay.
So 1 and 2 really go together. If you agree with every other week garbage collection, then you're going to increase from one bag to two bags every other week.
You want to vote on them individually?
You can, if that's the way you'd like to go. But I thought if we could kind of clear section by section, it might be helpful. So the other one in here is weekly recycling would be continued. What would be added is a new four-item large pickup per residential unit. So that might be larger items that you need to pick out that you're no longer using. So you'd be able to put four of those out every week. And then the other, number 5 is that they want to scrap the appliance and scrap metal pickup. So dealing with just low-density residential, which is 1 to 6 units, those are the five decision points that we need to come up with recommendations on tonight.
So the first one, going from weekly garbage collection to bi-weekly collection and going from one bag to two. I did do a little bit of research on six regions around the province, excuse me. And as an example, oftentimes they compare Waterloo region. Waterloo region does pick up every two weeks, but it's four bags. It's not two bags. Also, it should be noted that they have a little different process. They also do collect grass clippings. We don't. And on that issue, something, you know, worth at least comparing when you want to compare similar services.
Large pickups.
And large pickups, they do every other week. So when they have their garbage pickup. Yes, Counsel?
So I think you just summarized everything right there. And if you looked at the survey and the statistics that we have received through our staff, they indicate they're pretty happy with the existing system. No, no bag, clear bags, no change in the pickup. What do we want to change for?
Okay, so Counsel Peter Angelo?
Yeah, Your Worship, I know the region did come here a few weeks ago and presented to us. When they came and presented to us, I had some questions for them. I guess the one thing that's good in all of this is that they're going out to all the municipalities and they're asking for feedback. And they should be doing that because the way I look at it is that we pay for the service. And that was one of the questions that I had the lady who was here presenting on behalf of the region, is that to them, it's just a simple in and out. They get a bill from the contractor that they've now contracted the service to. They divide it up based on municipalities and then each municipality has to pay their own bill. So really, it's the municipalities that should decide what the service level is. And based on the feedback that we've been getting, Your Worship, I, I really don't think that people want to see a change. And I don't think that change would carry value with it as well. I know they talked about potential savings in other regions. And even in the report tonight, it talks about a $1.5 million savings in Waterloo. If you go on and you look at what the current annual rate of the cost for the contracted service is in Waterloo, it's around $15 million, which means that before they started this new contract, it was at 16 and 1/2. So they saved $1.5 million by going down to every other week. And if you think about that on a percentage basis, 1.5 million on 16 and 1/2 million, it's not even 10%. Well, the average homeowner in Niagara Falls pays $130 for the garbage bill. So we're now telling people that we can save them potentially $13, but then their service gets cut in half and then they have to go out and buy clear bags. I really don't think it's worth it. I don't, I, I think people are going to look at us later on and say, well, you really didn't do anything for me. And we probably wouldn't, so I'd say that we just leave it as it is.
Is there any motion?
Sure.
Okay, so we got a motion by Counsel Thompson, seconded by Counsel Peter Angelo, that we ask the region to leave the service as it is for the garbage. Counsel Campbell?
Thank you, Your Worship. Personal experience, I put some garbage out in a clear garbage bag last pickup. Somebody went through it the night before because they could see the contents of it. And there was a toilet seat I threw out and a couple of other things had been hanging around my basement. And the garbage was all over the driveway. So I can't, can't support the clear bags. No garbage yet.
Okay, so if there's no further comments, we'll call the vote for the status quo. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous on that one? Yep, thank you, Mr. CAO?
Yeah, there's just a couple of other items we, we should go through. On the multi-residential, we have, that's an enhanced service that we provide. What that does is on multi-residential properties that are over 6 units, we provide that pickup. And that's kind of unique in the region, but it's an extra level of service at the seat of Niagara Falls. What we were suggesting in the report is, let's ask the region to get us pricing on that. And then when we know what the pricing is, we can make a final decision on what we want to do with that.
Okay, moved by Counsel Thompson, seconded by Counsel Strange, that we get a price from the region on servicing the multi-residential units greater than 6. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved unanimously?
And Mr. Mayor, I assume that the status quo would apply to all of the other items dealing with inside and outside BIAs. I assume that covers that. The only other thing, again, that we should get pricing on and have it come back is our specific enhanced services, which include our public space recycling program, our city litter receptacles in the BIAs where we have seven-day-a-week collection mid-May to mid-October. And those are two enhanced services that we would continue to ask them to give us pricing on. When we have that pricing, we can come back and get a final decision from council on those as well. And I assume that the use of mandatory clear bags, I believe, we want to do a separate motion on that that basically says, I take it that council does not want to entertain clear bags? That's not a status quo item really.
Right, so we need a motion, a specific motion, moved by Counsel Campbell, seconded by...
What's the motion for? Clear bags.
We don't want...
We don't want them.
Yeah. Moved by, okay, moved by Counsel Campbell, seconded by Counsel LaCoco, that this council goes on record as not being in support of clear bags for our garbage. We'll call the vote, all those in favor? And that's unanimous?
So, Mr. Mayor, I think that's enough out of tonight that based on those motions, that we can get that information back up to the region. They're looking for feedback by the end of the month. Once we get the pricing and they do the tendering, we'll bring some other items back to council on those enhancements and we'll have a separate report at that time.
You know, counselors, one of the other things, my concerns that I'm hearing from residents is, I haven't, I know I saw the one stat that some people could accept clear bags. I haven't met that person yet that said they was, were okay with it. They don't want garbage police, they don't want their neighbors looking through their garbage and determining if they're putting organics in or, or who's wearing diapers in that household or, or whatever's going on. The other thing I've had people very concerned that if you start restricting the amount of garbage they can put out and whether they'll pick up appliances or not, you're going to find them in the rural areas, in the ditches, as we do sometimes now. People are going to drive and dump it out of their trunks on their own late at night. And we're going to have a big, much bigger cleanup. So I, I don't know what's precipitating this. And when you look around the province, and I looked at several regions, we're way ahead of what anyone else is trying to do. One of the arguments that they're using at the region is they're trying to promote diversion. So more recycling of organics and plastics and whatnot, less garbage. And they're, one of their main rationale is that, save our landfills. Well, the problem is our private landfills like Walker are taking garbage from other areas. They'll fill it up if not with our garbage, it'll be with garbage from some other jurisdiction. So I'm not sure, I know it's a noble idea, but to force people to do it, people are going to, I think rebel and you're going to find more and more of it in your rural areas. I don't think it's going to work well. And people don't like the idea of their privacy being infringed upon with clear bags. I have not heard any support from that whatsoever. So I'm not sure that statistic, how significant it is statistically. I, I doubt that it is. Because I haven't met these people, have you met these people, Counsel Peter Angelo?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. I keep, I keep looking, I keep looking. Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. CAO?
No, if, if I may, I, I took it that on the appliance and scrap metal pickup, that it would be continued because that's status quo.
Status quo, I took it that way too.
And the only other item I guess we should mention, and, and I believe it's a good thing, and I know from our staff, this can be a good thing, is that we would like to have the four large items per residential unit per collection included. Right now, as you know, if you set out large items, you have to call several days before. Quite typically what happens is that if you're at the end of the month and tenants are moving, people just set, set stuff up to curbside. Well, typically what ends up happening, our staff have to go and pick that up because it gets left behind because it wasn't on the list to be picked up. It does become a problem. I think that would be a good thing to include in this new contract where automatically you could put some larger items out at curbside, just as a variety, without having to call in and make that call.
So maybe we get a motion here supporting the idea of leaving large curbside items out at the weekly pickup? Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Strange. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. And I should point out, in Waterloo region again, it's every other week, but there's no limit to what you can put out. So I mean, they're looking at a major reduction in our service, you know? So I'm not sure that anyone asked them to do that. So, okay, so moving along, 8.3, council discretionary spending. The first item up there is our discretionary spending and there's a recommendation there with respect. Okay? Motion by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel, supporting that Counsel Thompson? Yeah, question by Counsel Carrio.
On the, moving the $500 to $1,000, how does that affect taxation? Anybody answer the question?
On personal tax?
Personal taxation, you know, because I'm assuming that even in a charitable donation for a private business, for a dinner, some of it's reassessed back to the, the business. Not 100%, it's not 100% tax deductible to go to a dinner, to donate to a dinner. The Revenue Canada comes in and does an assessment. They won't let you go and enjoy a dinner without having some of it allocated towards personal use. Does that affect this at all?
I don't know if we could ask her, yeah?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. So I think the idea with this is if you, if you want to attend the dinner, you would buy a ticket through your counselor allowance.
Right.
For the organization, you're right, only a portion of that would be considered charitable. But if you're not going to attend the dinner, we've changed the wording in the bylaw to allow you to buy a ticket or send a donation. So if you're not going to attend and you want to give a donation that's equivalent to the ticket value, they won't get you a plate for dinner or everything. That whole portion would be charitable.
So 100% tax deductible?
Correct.
Okay. Thanks, thank you.
Okay. If there's no further questions or comments, we've already got the motion, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved unanimously. Moving to 8.4, council committee remuneration. There are two recommendations there. Number one, that council receive the report. Number two, that by increasing the salaries to the non-union staff, subject to budget annual, the way that we've done it traditionally in the past.
Just reaffirming.
Yeah, so just, it's reaffirming.
I think this is what we always do.
Yeah. Okay, moved by Counsel Thompson. Yes, Counsel Carrio?
Question, Your Worship.
Yep.
So this does not address our remuneration for council's attending committees?
No, that doesn't, right? This is just the, the rate of increase, is that right?
But is this, is this what we were going to talk about, Counsel, right?
Yes.
So the staff is... So, the staff has not made a recommendation for remuneration for any counselors? No. Okay. Okay, so I, I'd like to have a discussion, so I'd like to hear what they have to say.
Okay, yep, Mr. Dark?
Through the, through the mayor and members of council, I, I was asked to do some, some research on this, and on the committee work remuneration, and it's, it's fair to say that, you know, Niagara Falls council has a large number of community committees. I think we totaled 25 or so. And the difficulty I had is that it's somewhat unprecedented in comparison. I didn't really find any other kind of reliable models out there to, to, in terms of comparison. So it's really, I suppose, at the will of council, or maybe perhaps reflecting that into base salaries or something, you know, or some other kind of creative way of doing it.
Okay, I've got Counselor Carrio, Counselor LaCoco?
Well, I understand that, you know, the staff doesn't want to really weigh in on this, but during the committee discussions, there are certain committees that are paid and certain committees that aren't paid, and, and I've always been a proponent of, of having counselors equally paid for the time they spend. So I'll put something on the floor then. If, I think that the counselors... Well, you know, it's funny, before we made the appointments, everybody wanted to go there, but now that the appointments are made, nobody wants to go there. I'm talking about, I think we should be paying our counselors for the committees that they sit on. And I would suggest that we pay them $75 per meeting to attend the committee, if they're on a committee that's appointed by council, if it's their committee, that we pay them or reimburse them. That's roughly the same amount that, the rate that Hydro reimburses our counselors, or the Parks Commission reimburses our counselors, or other committees would reimburse counselors. It's only fair that the counselors that put the same amount at a time, they get paid. So I'll throw it out for discussion.
Okay, so we've got, that's, does everyone understand that, so we can address that in a moment? Counselor LaCoco?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I thought when we were looking at it, we were looking exactly that, is if you were on one, one committee, you would get paid X number of dollars, if you were on six committees, you'd get paid X number of dollars. I would not support the increase overall for all of us, just for the certain committees. That's my opinion.
Okay, okay. Do we have other comments or feedback from counselors? Okay, so, you want to put that into a motion then, Counselor?
Okay. No, I would, I would move that, that we, that we put that system in place, that if you're a counselor on a committee appointed by council, so that means that you can't just go to a committee meeting and get paid. You have to be the counselor appointee on the committee, that you would get paid $75 for each meeting that you attend.
Okay. Do we have a second for that motion? Counselor Strange? Do we have any further discussion to that? Okay, seeing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved, thank you for that. And as well, we need to do item recommendations one and two here, one that we receive the remuneration, and two that we follow along in a firm bylaw 9922. Okay, moved by Counselor Campbell, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. There's no further discussion of that. We'll call the vote, all those in favor? Okay, and that's approved, thank you for that. Item 8.5 physician incentive funding. So you've got a report in there to help us recruit doctors and specialists to the community. Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, I'm very pleased to speak to this. We, in fact, I heard from you, we have four doctors in town that are still accepting patients, much better than it was in 2000. It was a disaster, and the doctor recruitment helped out, but we're now finding a specialist in the medical field are not here. People do not have the opportunity to, without traveling out of the area. So I think that the increase from 80 to 300,000 is appropriate, and I would like to certainly mention one doctor, I'm not gonna mention the name, but you have been in communication with her for the last year, and I happen to be in her office for some medical treatment, and there was like 50 or 60 people in the waiting room. And she's been trying to get another partner in here to take off some of the pressure. And I think she's got somebody, and has made lots of changes, and I think she'd be an excellent person. And I would suggest that Dale Morton, who has always handled this in the past, contact the doctor, and see if we can help her out and take some of the pressure off. But this is an extremely important area and responsible. I was shocked when Dr. Singh just moved his clinic to Fort Erie. Huge loss. I was there several times, and it was excellent. So I think we have a responsibility to do this, and I would move the report.
Okay, we got a mo- motion by Counselor Thompson.
I want to speak to that, too. I'll second that motion as well, and I agree with Counselor Thompson, that we do not have enough doctors obviously in the city. I'm down, and my, my mom is actually the medical secretary. I go down, I can't even get into my own doctor sometimes, my mom's the medical secretary. I go down, I'm using the walk-in clinic, and there's like 100 people waiting. So I think with the influx of, of our population, and it's, it's not the right ratio as far as doctors to population, so I agree, agree with this, and have to second the motion.
Okay, so we got a motion by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Strange, that we approve report number 201904 physician recruiting. Call the vote, all those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous, thank you for that. Onto the consent agenda?
Move the consent agenda?
Motion by Counselor Carrio, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo, that we move the consent agenda, unless there's anyone that needed anything lifted. And seeing nothing, nothing coming forward, we'll call the vote, all those in favor? Okay, and that's approved, thank you. So we move on to communications and comments of the city clerk. So I see we've got one here, fire department annual report. The recommendation is that we receive the report for information. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by, yes, Counselor Thompson?
Congratulations to the chief on excellent report.
All right, congratulations, chief, seconded by Counselor LaCoco. And you want to comment on it, Counselor? Yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was an excellent report, thank you very much. I had two questions from some residents. When there's medical calls and the fire department get there first, what is the cost to the fire department compared to EMS? And the second question is, is there a charge for false calls?
Questions for the chief?
The first question, Mr. Mayor, to the counselor, the first question, is there a cost to the fire department? I mean, our staff are on duty 24/7, so whether we're responding to the call or sitting in the station, it's, there would be no cost that way. The only fuel that we would have to do, pay for would be fuel to the vehicle. I don't know if that really answers the question?
No, I, I'm sorry, I meant, is there a cost to the person for the false alarm? Sorry.
So, in the medical call, there's no cost to the person if fire goes to the call. There is a fee for if the patient is transported to the hospital through ambulance and OHIP. As far as false alarms, we do have a fee for service budget line that allows us to charge back for false alarms in buildings, so remote alarms, hotel alarms, stuff like that, but this council several years ago waived those fees, so we don't recuperate that.
All right, we got questions answered. There's no further questions, then we'll call the vote to receive the report. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved, thank you. Moving on to 10.2, Canadian Forces Snowbirds are having their airshow at Niagara District Airport, and they're asking for our, an approval letter for them to fly 500 feet above the ground through Niagara Falls. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Carrio. There's no further discussion, we'll call the vote, all those in favor? And that's approved?
Yours twice.
Moving on to 10.3, the downtown BIA is requesting that we discontinue the 90-minute free parking and move the paid parking into the downtown BIA district. So we're looking for motion?
We refer to staff. That's the recommendation.
We'll refer to staff to come back with the report, I'm sorry, yes, Mr. CAO?
Mr. Mayor, we would just like to have this referred to staff, because it does have some capital budget implications, so we'd like to address it when the capital budget comes back.
Move the recommendation.
Okay, moved by Counselor Carrio, seconded by Counselor Dubrowski. Call the vote, all those in favor? Okay, and we refer that to staff. Town of Lincoln resolution, they have put forward a resolution in support of the Ontario wine and beer in retail stores as part of the modernization of alcohol sales. So they're looking for support for their resolution. How do you feel about that? Yes, Counselor Carrio?
I think that we're not really equipped to deal with that right now, unless we're gonna do some investigating and find out the pros and cons if we either refer it to staff or receive and file, because I think it would, wouldn't be righteous to...
Yeah, buying it everywhere, yeah. So do we have, well, do we have a motion by, what, what do you recommend? What's the will of council?
Receive and file?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't want to give staff any more to do, but I don't want to vote on this if, unless we're gonna do some research.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's a good thing or a bad thing.
Refer.
Refer it to staff?
Yeah.
He doesn't want to refer it to staff?
He wants to refer it to you.
He's got enough to do.
So Dale could do a report for you.
How are you gonna...
What was that?
Refer it to staff.
Okay, okay, well, it looks like we got a will of council, they want to refer it to staff for Dale Morton to do, and put Ken's name on it. Okay, so that's what we do.
Every liquor store.
Okay, moved by Counselor Carrio, seconded by Counselor Thompson. We'll call the vote, all those in favor? Okay, all right, Dale, congratulations. We got some more work for you. Oppose? Oh, Counselor Carrio is opposed. Did you make the motion?
No, I was gonna, I was gonna...
Well, did I have him making the motion?
No, I was gonna, receive and file.
Oh, okay, so I need someone else to make it. Counselor Peter Angelo making the motion?
Yes.
Seconded by Counselor Thompson. Okay.
To refer to staff.
Right, okay, all right, good, got it, thank you. 10.5, fresh air front proclamation, request to have March 22nd be fresh air fun day. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Strange. All those in favor? That's approved. The Rotary Club of Niagara Falls having a 21st trivia night. Yes, Mr. CAO, did you want to comment on this?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, six, seven, and eight. If I could just lead you through based on the recommendation that you just approved, with your new discretionary spending.
All of the recommendations in the agenda as well.
So eight is asking for a table, so the process, now that you've approved the report, if any of you would like to go to that event and, and buy a ticket, that will be now coordinated through the mayor's office, so you simply would make the request to have them purchase a ticket for that event on your behalf. It would then come out of your $1,000 discretionary spending.
Set a table by yourself?
I could. Or, or you may make a donation from that same fund. That's the same that goes for number seven with the Bonsfield, where they're looking for a key. Again, that could be an individual sponsorship that you could take, you just have to request that through the mayor's office. With the Wendy Lear, which is the third one, that's more of a sponsorship, but again, as individuals, if you like to sponsor that, you could contact the mayor's office and ask that you have a sponsorship for that event. So, in the future, we will have these sent to you via the clerk's office, and that's how we would deal with them on an individual basis. We don't need to have individual group motions or anything based on the new policy that you've just approved tonight. So these, Mr. Mayor, could really just be received and filed.
Counselor Carrio?
Okay, I understand. If a counselor calls and says, "I want to make a donation," and it comes out of that fund, who gets the charitable tax receipt? Taxpayers or the counselor? Or nobody? How's that work?
Well, through you, Mr. Mayor, it's, 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 it's money coming from the city. So on, on a donation, there's no tax receipt because we don't, we don't pay taxes.
Officially, the, the donation would not be made officially by the counselor, it would be made officially by the city.
It's coming from the city?
By the city.
But it's out of, it's out of that $1,000 allowance?
The donation would be made at the request of the counselor, but be made by the city.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so, did you want to make a motion that we receive the three reports, and then our staff can reach out? Okay. Moved by Counselor Carrio, seconded by Counselor Strange, that we receive the report, the three requests for funding support, and that our staff and the mayor's office will reach out to the counselors and see who wants to put some of their discretionary money toward any or all of these requests. Yes, Counselor Thompson?
I'm wondering with Wendy Lear, we've all had that information on our computers. If there's some way we could assist by putting it on the city website, and I think it's great, they're all going to New York from Queen Street to perform down there, and see if there's anybody in the community who would like to support that.
Which one is that now?
Wendy Lear's dance studio.
Oh, right, right. Well, so we're gonna, oh, I see what you're saying. Did you wanna, well, did we call the vote already? I'm sorry, did, I'm the last one.
You have not.
So do you want to include that as a friendly amendment, Counselor Carrio, that we also put on our website, encouraging the community to throw support behind the Wendy Lear Dance Studio, for their going to New York? Okay, we'll include that in our motion. You good with that, Counselor?
Sorry, did you call the vote?
No, I'm gonna call it now. Okay, we'll call the vote, all those in favor? Opposed? Are you for it, or are you against?
He's against Wendy Lear.
Ever since he took his dance lessons, he's... Okay, moving along. 10.9, proclamation, 2019 Heritage Week, requesting that municipal Heritage Week that council proclaimed February 18th to 24th as Heritage Week. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, and seconded by Counselor Dubrowski. All those in favor? And that's approved, thank you. 10.10, there's a boarding house bylaw request from Mr. Ross Hicks to have council consider a boarding house bylaw. Yes, Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, I've been dealing with this for the last year and a half, and our inspection people, Gerald Spencer and his people have been phenomenal in dealing with this. You've got a, a small street, Harvey Street, a little crescent at the end, and you've got a house there in a single-family residential area that has 10 boarding rooms, and the cars are out on the street all day, and they put six cars in the driveway at night, and Mr. Ross Hicks has been trying to see what can be done. And I think the problem is, we don't have a bylaw regarding boarding homes in single-family residential areas. I think there's the possibility that a couple of rooms could, could exist, but having 10 rooms in that area is unacceptable to all of the neighbors in the area. And I would like to refer this to staff to come back with a report on how we should handle this in the future.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Campbell, that we refer this report, or this direction on boarding houses to staff to come back with a report. Okay, we'll call the vote, all those in favor? And that's approved, thank you. Ratification of in-camera, Mr. Clerk? Do we have any ratification?
Nothing to ratify.
Okay, and moving on to the bylaws?
Give them a first, second, and third reading.
Okay, before we do that, do we have any additional bylaws, Mr. Clerk?
No.
So we have a motion by Counselor Peter Angelo to give the bylaws a first, second, and third reading, seconded by Counselor Dubrowski. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved, Mr. Clerk?
New business.
Okay, you don't need to read them, or you don't need to see the proof?
Nope.
Okay, it's all done, okay, good. New business. Do you have any new business from council? Counselor Peter Angelo's holding out. Counselor Thompson?
Valentine.
Valentine, yeah.
He wants to wait till the end. Stretch it out. Anyway, had a call today from a city resident who has acquired a piece of property at Miller Estates subdivision, was owned by... of property at Miller Estates subdivision. It was owned by, what's his name?
Rico.
No, this is Brian Sinclair's original one. It's been there approved for probably 10 years. And the woman has purchased it two or three years ago, and she got approval for the septic system out there. They're two or three acres, and she was coming in to get a building permit. Everything has been approved by this city council planning, and she went to see about the building permit, and they told her, City of Niagara Falls now wants you to go to the Environment Conservation Authority to get their approval before we give you a building permit. So, she has to hire people, she has to go to a hearing, all kinds of nonsense after years, and she's probably the first one that's had to do that. I would like to have a report back to see why are we doing this? I can understand if it was a new development that we hadn't dealt with yet, but this has been there for probably longer than 10 years. And she was extremely upset about the fact that she was ready to build, came in, got her septic permit, was going to get, deal with the city for her building permit, and they said, you've got to go to the Conservation Authority now.
Okay.
Anyway, I've heard enough about the Conservation Authority. So, I would move we have a report back to see why are we doing this, and if it's necessary.
Okay. Motion by Council Thompson, seconded by Council Carrio, that we have staff come back with a report on building permits and on the process and why it's necessary to go to the NPCA for approval of past approved developments. So, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Thank you. Council Thompson, anything else? You're done? Who else has new business? Council Peet Angelo?
Happy Valentine, David.
Moved by Councillor Carrio, seconded by Council Thompson, that we adjourn. All those in favor? And we're adjourned. Happy Valentine's, everybody.